Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for Wednesday, February 4th. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Haroff.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Vice Mayor Way.
Here.
Mayor Chu.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Hilmer is absent.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, at this time, we have a closed session item where it's a conference with labor negotiators, so under Government Code Section 54957.6, we will be adjourning. Dan, can you give an approximate time, give range?
I don't think we'll need more than half an hour at the most, Mr. Mayor, if that.
Okay, thank you. So, for those of you who are here, you can take a break for about 20 minutes to a half an hour. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Council has just reconvened from closed session and there is no reportable action. Next item on our agenda is approval of a consent calendar. We have warrants and minutes from the January 21st meeting. Would anyone like either item that you pulled for discussion or modifications? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is city manager's oral report.
Well, I'll start with Mr. Mayor, as I think the council is aware, there was a fire today up on King Street. We don't have all the details yet, but it was in a single-family residence. As I understand it, no significant injuries, but serious property damage. Thank you to our fire guys, who responded quickly. As folks know, there's a lot of houses really close together in that area, and that kind of fire could have spread rather quickly, so we appreciate the quick response of our public safety team. We are continuing our community facility project, and I will allow those who were in attendance, probably during your council members' reports, to report on our recent community meeting, but I wasn't able to be there last Thursday. I understand it went quite well, got a lot of good feedback. We continue to make progress at the technical level and are on track to deliver a design to the community with its input later this year, so we're very excited about that and how that process is progressing. Actually, other than that, it's been all budget for us lately, so, and I don't really want to spend my manager's report with all the minutia of the budget, because we'll do that in one of our agenda items, so.
Okay, yes, we will hear about that later. Does anyone have any separate questions or comments for the city manager? Okay, seeing none at this point. Now, we can have our own reports and comments. Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Go ahead, yes.
I just have three, I have three things I'd like to reference. The first is, last Tuesday, Councilmember Haroff and I both attended the Planning Commission meeting, on which the draft proposal for the housing element was discussed, and it was well-attended, and I'm sure we're going to be hearing a lot more about that in that following meeting that we have. Second, and three of us were there, and to know that we attended the Chamber of Commerce Dinner on Monday night, and it was just a few members of the business community and the three of us, so, I know you're the liaison, and it was very nice to hear about some of the current and up-and-coming businesses that are going to hopefully join us here, mostly on Magnolia, and also how well some of the businesses who attended are doing, so. You can add any more to that if you want. And then lastly, on Thursday, I was the only council member who was able to attend the Larkspur Library and Community Center first public meeting that was held at the police station, and I would say probably 45 to 50 community members were there. Some really good work was done as far as getting feedback from the community with our architects and our city staff, and also some long-term residents of Larkspur were there who worked on projects like this for many years, and that was nice to see. So, the next meeting is on Tuesday, February 17th, for those who can make it, in this council chambers, and I hope to be there too, so.
Okay, thank you. Ann? Nothing? Kevin?
I think Catherine covered my stuff.
It's okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, so we can just move right on tonight. Now's the time for public comment. If anybody in the audience would like to address the council on a matter that's not on our agenda tonight, please step up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Rich Semino. I live in Larkspur at 60 Elizabeth Circle, over by Niven Park, and last week, I emailed the city council members a copy of my letter to the Zone 9 and County Supervisor Rice regarding the Ross Valley flood control plan that's marching right along, and my concerns about not having a planning module in the existing plan to take care of downstream, specifically Corder Madera Creek, as it flows out into the bay, and I'm not sure, because so much has been going on, I had photos of the last flood in December, and I'm not sure that they went with the email, and could I approach your table and give you a copy each? Good. So, essentially, my concern is, you know, obviously, when you look at these photos, there's just massive amounts of water that come downstream and really hit Niven Park. And just, I guess, as a sidebar and footnote, I recently was accepted to be a commissioner on Larkspur Parks and Rec. So while I'm not addressing the Parks and Rec thing specifically, you know, there is a strong interest there for Niven Park, because Niven Park has that neat little cove, you're probably familiar with it, and these, the first pictures, are where we want to put new park furniture, and, you know, we're spending, going to spend quite a bit of money to really enhance the non-flood season, so people can use these parks and picnic and have kids out running around and doing all the things, all the recreation things that we want the citizens to do, but with a couple good storm events, you know, we could really wipe out our investment in all this money. So we, so my concern is, and the reason I wrote the letter, and it was directed to the manager of the specific Ross Valley, Tom McCarney, I may not be pronouncing his name correctly, McCarney, thank you, and Susan Rice, is to get their attention, because Kevin has written an op-ed, there was a response that was a little bit defensive about what Kevin had written in the IJ, and I think the public has to weigh in a little bit to show support for Larkspur's government, if you will, our city council, and the fact that, you know, we could suffer a lot of damage. Catherine's talking about new businesses coming in, and there's a lot of business downstream that could flood, and that impacts, you know, it impacts our city if we don't have a bigger voice in the planning from the front end, and I'll make this short, I know I'm only supposed to have three minutes, but I actually got on the Corps of Engineers website, and so all the money's going upstream, we all know that, but we pay a lot of property taxes, and we're all aware of that. So when I got on the Corps of Engineers website, they have a permit for 2015 to dredge down by what they call the Larkspur Marina, on the other side of 101. They're going to dredge nine acres, and they've got it funded, I think it was $3 million. And I don't know why we can't somehow get the attention of the Ross Valley planning and get a module in there for at least a plan, to see what it takes to get a permit to dredge Corder Madera Creek and get ready to accept this water that they're going to be pushing downstream in a major storm event. So I'm going to sort of stay on it as just a civic project, and I'll keep updating everyone, and I'm going to keep writing letters, and so I just wanted to announce this to everyone that it's important, and I think we have to have a public voice as well as this, you know, the government voice involved in this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The council actually submitted something to the Flood Zone Number 9 District, and I'll get you a copy of that.
Oh, great.
And I'll also, I know you emailed all of us, but Councilmember Hilmer is our rep on Flood Zone 9.
Oh, Hilmer, okay.
Yeah, and, you know, he would be the one to best be able to bring you up to date on, you know, their planning and, you know, where our downstream projects are looking like, you know, in their planning process.
Okay. Good, so he's the, he'll be the contact person, the point person, and from there. Yeah, this is, you know, this is going to take a lot of time and patience, because it's a lot of money, and the money's going upstream, and somehow, you know, well, I'm speaking to the choir, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to use this opportunity to make a comment to the council? Okay, seeing none at this point. There are no public hearings tonight. I'm going to switch up one item, I've been told to, that we will not be having a pavement update tonight, so I'll need a motion from the council to continue that to a meeting. Do we know when? Probably March 4th?
I think that would be advisable, we know the 18th of February is a pretty full agenda.
Okay.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Okay, we have motion, second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So the first business item we have tonight is our Mini Parks Action Plan, and we have Mary Grace Houlihan, our Public Works Director, and Dick Whitley, our Park and Rec Director. Welcome.
It's a great report, isn't it?
I've never seen that screen before.
I've never seen this before.
Maybe if you just click on this line?
I'm in preparation.
Ah.
It sounds funny to me.
How did you do that?
Okay, all right, well, we don't have a culture, so.
Plan, and in recommending approval of this plan and asking council to direct staff to get it into action, so I'm going to give a brief overview of what was entailed in putting the plan together, and what the final product is, and the intent, and how it's to be used. So, this plan, and I apologize that this is so small, this plan is covering our mini parks, which are, and I'm going to call them our active mini parks, these are Doliver Neighborhood, Heatherwood, Hill, I'm sorry, Bonner Park.
Bonner Landing.
Bonner Landing.
Centennial.
Centennial, thank you. Niven.
Green Bay School.
Green Bay School. Neighborhood Park. And then there's two greenways, the Magnolia Greenway and the Hillview Greenway. Those areas are not really parks, but they are an expanded area of our right-of-way that has a multi-use path carrying through them. The Mini Parks Action Plan and how it was developed, this has been going on for a little over a year here, we've had public outreach meetings, we had Survey Monkeys, we've completed condition assessment of the existing improvements and facilities that are there, we did data gathering, basically cataloging everything that was at each facility, compiled all the information, did ADA assessments, and identified possible park enhancement projects. The funding for this plan, so to say, is, comes from a number of sources. The goal was to develop an action plan, something that we could actually take on and make progress on it, not a plan that would just sit on the shelf and have numbers that were too intimidating to basically try to get anything done. So we looked at how to break up projects that Public Works could do through increased operation and maintenance. Public Works operations and maintenance could take on what we're calling mini CIPs, mini capital improvement projects, that our staff and the talents that we have in-house could take on, community participation projects, and then the standard capital improvement projects. There is funding to apply to the mini parks, which council acted last year to apply the Measure A funds, which is approximately $70,000 a year for nine years, towards the mini parks. Some of the things that have already started going into the works this last year were increased operations and maintenance activities through turf maintenance, we started aerating and fertilizing, did a huge amount of irrigation repairs this last year, increased our vegetation maintenance, did some extensive pruning, we've started a scheduling to be able to visit every park every week and do regular maintenance, as well as doing enhanced maintenance at least once a month. We've done refurbishment of the fall zone material, the bark, which is quite important around our play structures, and we've started a tree management program where our internal staff is dealing with tree maintenance for trees that are approximately 20 feet and under, the much larger trees, we have an arborist that comes in, and our tree service that comes and assists with those, and we have been working with an arborist to do tree assessments of all our public trees, identify safety issues, and just how to keep them healthy and safe. Some joint projects in the community, we had successful Green Bay School Park enhancement, which was fabulous, and Neighborhood Park, they have, should be kicking off here shortly to construct a new playground up at Main Neighborhood. Plans are all approved, council authorized an agreement, and the folks up in the surrounding area there at Neighborhood are funding that new playground. We've met with the Heatherwood community and are talking about a community project there to replace the sand with proper fall zone material and replace the swing set there, and then also working with coordination with volunteer groups and scouting associations, where they can come in and take on a project, and we're better prepared for that now, as we have these various projects identified. Some of the capital projects that are underway is replacement of the play structure at Doliver. We've had an ongoing Survey Monkey. Alvin did a man-on-the-street, visited with several kids out at Doliver Park to get their opinion on what kind of play structure to replace there, and we're ready to come forward to Parks and Rec at our next meeting with the selection of community and get that project going. We have been working with the Heatherwood community and did a Survey Monkey with them, had a community meeting to select new swings and the type of fall zone material for that park, and then we are underway with the design of the refurbishment of the Doliver restroom. So, what is the plan format? I wanted to kind of give an overview here. So we have an overview of each park, we have a condition assessment, and we have projects in the works, and then we've got basically the next steps, or what's the future for each site. This is an example of each one, and what our landscape architect, KLA, has put together is basically an inventory and diagram for each park, identifying what is currently there. In this section in here, it's identifying the accessibility issues, so things that need to be improved as far as accessibility for all folks, and then a brief description of the facility. We have a little map identifying where it is and a little bit of a street view. The next page that you'll have for each park is, oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to include this, this was a summary of what we got, for example, of what the Larkspur residents were saying. So this is what we got through Survey Monkey and meetings, of things that the community wanted to have implemented, and we incorporated all of these comments into the action plan. We have photo documentation of the parks, so there's several pages of photos, just to give idea of what it is, people can visualize what's going on. And then we have the summary of the park improvements, and this table is kind of our key. It identifies these three categories of things that can be done through normal operations and maintenance, things that can be done through community participation, and things that have to be done through a typical capital improvement project. On a few of the parks, this one is, for example, Bonner Park, the architect has given us the concept sketch of what the new improvements would kind of look like at this one. We are lucky that at Bonner Park, we've got some funding through the Bonner Bridge to rehabilitate the dock and provide full ADA access up to the street, so that'll reconstruct all of this walkway and all the way down for that park. The plan then also includes a summary, a description, of each of these items on the previous page, so the numbering corresponds to the numbering back on the previous page, and giving a description of what the anticipated improvements to be. And then we have a estimate. These estimates are our ballpark, they give us kind of a guide of saying, okay, something will be smaller, $500 or $1,000, or something's going to be $50,000, so that we can kind of take that into consideration, as we have various fundings available and opportunities. So, where we are now, I'm going to let Dick Whitley talk a little bit about our presentation to the Parks and Rec Commission, and what their opinion is of the plan, if that's all right.
Good evening. The, oh, thank you. Are we on? Can you hear me? Thank you. Mary Grace Houlihan came in and was full of enthusiasm for an action plan, not a master plan, she made that clear from the very start, and through her enthusiasm, got the Parks and Recreation Commission fired up about it as well. She was very good about presenting things at an ongoing basis, she showed up for almost every meeting every month, with a new update, with new progress, discussions about what was being contemplated, and basically talking them through the entire thing, not that it needed to be simplified for them, but they met with as much, they gave as much enthusiasm as she gave them, and it was very wholeheartedly backed at our last meeting in January. They were very much behind it and enthusiastically asked the staff to bring it up to the city council for approval. Is there something else?
Oh, that's awesome. So, I am excited about this plan, I think it's something that is a plan that we can take and work with and make improvements, and it incorporates the community's ideas, and the community has opportunity to get involved in these mini parks, which are such a special part of our community. When you look at how the mini parks lay out, they lay out very evenly through the city, and it's quite interesting, because when you talk to anybody who uses any particular mini park, inevitably they'll tell you, this is the most-used mini park in the whole city. And I believe it, because they are all well-utilized and well-loved, and they're well-loved by their little neighboring community, they all have a special character and what have you, so enhancing them, bringing new vitalization into them, I think is really a cool thing for all of our neighborhoods. So I think this is something special. So, staff is asking council tonight to adopt this plan and direct us to put it into action, so.
Thank you. Before we, love members of the audience to comment, does council have any questions for either Mary Grace or dear?
I do.
Okay.
Mary Grace, as in the pavement improvement plan we went through, you prioritized pavements that were needed based on a criteria. Is there an order of in which this will be prioritized, park-wise, or was it too early to talk about that?
I think there's a few things that really are key. The play structures.
The safety.
Are, and safety issues are really number one. So, you know, staff will be looking at that annually with the recommendation of how to apply the Measure A funds of, you know, probably dealing with those structures, and this last year, council did give us direction to apply those dollars towards structures at Doliver and at Heatherwood Park, and then doing work at Green Bay School. So, as part of fiscal year 1415, we are doing that. As we move forward, I mean, we do have ADA improvements and things of that sort, but I think this plan gives us an opportunity to look for options for where funds may be available. We've had numerous people say, can I, what if I want to donate something? And it gives us an opportunity to say, that's fabulous, you know, here's some opportunities. So, I think it's one of those things, we continue to do work with the community, and, but I do think the safety issues are the number one that we need to look at.
Okay, go ahead.
Mary Grace, how about, we've got some complaints about the lights in the Niven Park. Are those fixed, that lights didn't work as well, or it was blinking back off and on and making noise?
I think that was a streetlight issue that we did resolve. It was about a month or so ago.
Yeah, I thought it was that was in the park.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then what about the Midian strips? Is that something that can be thrown in?
The Medians are part of our street improvements, so definitely that's something we can chat about, that's not part of this.
No, I know, I was just wondering. Okay. And then Dick, someone, we had that woman that wanted to donate that bench, remember that? She wanted...
That is, actually, we're going through that right now at the commission level, where we are selecting with the Parks and Recreation we are selecting with the Parks and Recreation Commission various styles so that going forward, if somebody wants to donate a bench, picnic table, a, a, um, trash can, we need those as well.
Water fountains?
They're all of a uniform, uh, style and that, that complements the area, and it's throughout the city. So, that, that is definitely being worked on. And it's, is that February or March?
No, I think they approved, actually. The, um, uh, Parks and Rec selected a style-
Okay.
At the last meeting. So, we'll be able to post something up on the website here shortly with-
Great.
Here's some options. Um, we have a donor that we're working with, um, at Piper, who wants to donate a bench to overlook the soccer field. Um, so, we're working on that one right now. And yes, we, we will have opportunities, like I say, or like Dick has said, if someone wants to donate more than a bench, if they want to donate a picnic table, um-
There's plenty of opportunities.
Yep. There's, there's more opportunities.
Great. Thank you.
Kevin?
Just a comment, just to thank you very much for bringing attention and focus to these, to these parks and, uh, to bring the improvements that are, that are necessary. I, I really, particularly this, this evening, appreciate your focus on the Bonner Landing Park. That's kind of a little gem that's kind of hidden away, and I'm sure is well-known by the community that lives in the immediate vicinity of that park. But it's really kind of a unique asset to our community, and, and the more we can do to highlight the, the, that, those kinds of things that we do for our community, I think is terrific. So, I just want to thank you for that.
Great. You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, would any members of the public like to make a comment or any suggestions for Public Works or Park and Rec? Okay. Uh, seeing none at this time, uh, our task tonight is to, um, approve this plan. If, uh, there are any suggestions you want to make to, uh, either Mary Grace or Dick, you know, now's the opportunity. No?
Do we make a motion?
Uh, I just have one little nitpicky thing. Proves I've read it. Oh, uh, you know, on the, uh, the, the list of all the, uh, amenities, uh, they, they just need to be brought up to date because it doesn't match up with any of the maps. You know, when you look at the individual maps, for example, I know Centennial Park, there, there aren't, I think there's only one item checked off, but yet there are a whole slew of things in terms of the amenities, you know, like a park bench there, there's water fountain there, and the tennis courts are there, there's signage.
I'll check that, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's like about, I don't know, like four pages in. Page-
One oh four?
Yeah, one oh four.
I'm wondering if we put in the wrong one.
Anyway, I, I'm sure-
We'll double check.
That's easy to fix.
Thank you.
But yeah, th- this is a great job. Lot, lot of work. Thank you to the Park and Rec Commission. And, uh, I will take a motion if somebody is ready to, uh, make one.
What's the motion that we need to make?
Uh, we need to accept this mini park action plan.
Okay, I'll make that motion to accept this mini park action plan that is well organized.
I'd be happy to, uh, second enthusiastically.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you for making the presentation.
Thank you.
Very organized.
Okay, we have a fairly short agenda tonight. We have one more item. It's our mid-year financial update. And tonight, we have our finance director, Kathy Arm.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I think we're going to have to go off the paper tonight.
Sorry, folks. It's just not working tonight. Oh, well, maybe. It might come up sooner or later if you... This is, it's a brief presentation on our mid-year financial statements where we are with the general fund, mid-year being December thirty first, two thousand and fourteen. And, um, the agenda that I have tonight is for an economic update, uh, general fund overview, challenges on the horizon, and then council discussion and questions. So, Marin County, as far as an economic update goes, is, um, the, the economy is in a slow, it shows steady growth. I mean, we have the median home prices from December of last year to this year increased fourteen percent. That's pretty, that's a pretty big jump. And then our unemployment rate is three point four percent, whereas the U.S. unemployment rate is at six, so it's very low. And, and then the future job growth, the protected job growth is at thirty nine point four percent, which is an increase over the U.S. economy as well. So-
I'm sorry, that's over what period of time?
The, the period of time would have been for last December. There we go. Right? I don't know what-
Let's use that.
Okay. There we go. So, for, and then this, I also listed the sources from EDD Labor Market, Marin County, or Marin IJ, and the, um, Department of, um, the DOT. There's a website, the DOT at, uh, California dot gob to get to all the stats on.
T or F?
T. DOT dot C A dot G O B.
Okay, DOT is Department of Transportation?
They have, um, stats on e, for each county and each town, certain, um, statisticals that I go through and look at.
Oh, okay. I just knew the DOT was the official demographic source of the, uh, state of California. They got a lot of stuff out there, too.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Okay. Any, any other questions? So, this is a look at our general fund at a snapshot, and it's very hard to see, but what you can, there are revenues are, um, as a percent of budget, um, are actually tracking a little bit ahead of time, a little bit ahead. Um, so, through our, is we're at fifty-two percent and coming in at seven point seven million, whereas our expenditures are coming, um, a little bit, coming below budget right now, um, at forty... Have to put my glasses on to see this one. I get forty-eight percent. With that said, a lot of more activity happens in the spring and summer months, so we should see it, and it's, the trend for the expenditures to pick up a little bit in the second half of the year. But, um, for the moment, this is a good spot to be at mid-year with your revenues tracking slightly above your budget, and then you're, you're holding your expenses, uh, a little bit below. So, we should be, we're, we're in good shape at the moment. We're taking a closer look at, um, revenues that are, that have come in, our property tax being, um, coming in right on budget. Sales tax, this projection, I didn't have, uh, I had five months payments, not six, with the six-month payment. We're right on track because it comes from the state. The state always lags behind. I didn't get it, uh, this wasn't in time for the presentation, but I recently received it, so we are looking good at the sales tax. Other taxes, um, also include TOT and business license. And business license, we've transitioned over to using muni services. So, we, in our first year of transition, we have some lag time there, so that will pick up as well. Everything else is tracking right where it should be. The use of money is investment earnings. This is a timing issue, so we will see the investment earnings come in by the next quarter. And then, um, the one revenue I want to mention is the fire reimbursement to the state. We don't budget for this because we don't know when they go, our firefighters go out for fires, and they did a lot of fires this last summer. And we are expected to get another fifty-five thousand coming in. This offsets their overtime that they've accrued, so, um, we still have quite a bit of more money coming in that. And then the other agencies is our state mandates. The thirty-six thousand that came in are some from very, very old state mandates. We, um, this state stopped paying for a while. We've gotten some state mandates back to two thousand and seven, six, even as old as three, two thousand and three that we had reported in. So, they're finally releasing, we, we'd get things for the Brown Act or for agenda items. So, um, they are finally releasing funds now that they're not, um, hurting in, in the hole as much either. So, that's a closer look at our revenues at the moment. Any other question? Yes.
I think, could you just, uh, define for me what charges for services would include?
Charges of services would be for, um, our planning and building permits.
I see.
Yeah.
Does that also include, I, I think, didn't we talk about we're charged, we're, um, selling some, or charging for some of your services to Ross and-
Yes. And that, that would be, well, not to Ross, but with, this would be for my services to CMPA-
Okay.
And to RVPA, Ross Valley Paramedics. Is that, if that was Ross you were talking about, paramedic authority?
That would have been.
Um, and we, I generally don't book those until the end of the year. So, that is, um, a revenue that I don't do the transfer until later.
Okay.
But that is correct. Any other questions? A pie chart, of course, of our mid-year, um, where our, shows our property taxes are the largest source of general fund revenue, um, followed by sales tax. So, our property taxes definitely supports, um, our functions. A look at, um, mid-year expenditures by department. I have to say, all the departments have really have held their costs. There are, um, below, like I said, but tracking below the budget. And so, that, this is what's, this slide is showing the percent remaining, so they have fifty-two percent more to go in their budgets. So, they're holding right on track, which is great. So, everybody's doing a great job there. But we will see an increase of activity in the second half. Correct. Correct. So, this, one was showing, uh, as of budget, this one is a percent of remaining. Again, this is a pie chart just showing what the, all the departments are looking like and how they're split up with police and fire being of the largest portions. But, you know, like I said before, this is a very good place for us to be mid-year, but we really do have some challenges ahead of us that we, I brought up last June during the budget time that we really need to start addressing. And one of the biggest one is, is the rising OPEB costs and how we're going to fund that, and then getting a trust fund and, and start putting some money into that piece of it. And I think, Dan, you have, I don't know.
Yeah, I get to deliver the bad news. Um, you know, I, I wanted, we'll do a series of workshops with the council in the spring on each of these topics as the numbers start to materialize. As the council knows, we gave you the actuarial report on the OPEB liability. Councilmember Haroff and Mayor Chu are working with me now to plan for that work, that future workshop with you to develop and present a strategy for dealing with the OPEB liability. But almost any approach we would do, we're going to at least have to deal with what's called our, our normal cost there. That's four hundred to five hundred thousand next year that we had to build into the budget. We also now have received our reports from PERS with their new actuarial analysis. And the council may recall that PERS is making some changes. They're shifting, uh, some of the unfunded liabilities that each member of, each different type pool has from a percentage of payroll to a fixed payment. So, that means that we now know there is this fixed lump sum amount of money that's expected to be paid from Larkspur to PERS in addition to what we build into our payroll. We know that between, uh, the different contracts we have with PERS, plus our responsibility as a member of CMPA, that we're probably looking at close to another half a million dollars in costs. So, we really are looking at most of the increase in revenue that we're going to see in our budget having to be, uh, directed toward these problems. So, um, we're really going to have to hold the line on expenditure so that capacity's available to deal with that. And, um, that's going to be difficult, not only for us as a dis, matter of discipline, but it's going to be difficult for the community, I think, because the economy's doing better, but we're not going to be able to necessarily turn all that money around and invest it the way we would prefer to. You know, as you've heard me say before, some of our credit card debt's coming due, and we have to start paying down that debt. On a positive note, one thing we've focused here is on the general fund. But typically, when we do the snapshot for you, we get focused on the general fund. We've worked very hard over the last five years to, to bring in as much restricted money as possible. We've done, I think, a pretty good job, particularly with the road monies, uh, bringing in new pots of money there. Those pots continue to grow at a nice pace so that we're spending more and more on pavement. Measure C is doing, is running about fifty-three percent, so it's running about three percent above what we projected it would do, just as, uh, our sales tax is. And, uh, we continue to enjoy the franchise amounts that we added, uh, in our, from our garbage contracts. We've been really pleased with that. Mary Grace Houlihan, your Public Works Director, and I have been brainstorming on some other sources of money and some ways to qualify different infrastructure throughout the city. So, we're trying to figure out ways to move costs out of the general fund and into other categories where they'll qualify for monies that are out there. And that'll be one way we can start to enjoy more money coming in to, to produce for the community while we wrestle with these other structural problems and challenges that we have.
Okay. Um, any questions from the council for our finance director or city manager? Okay. Would any member of the audience like to ask any questions? Okay. Uh, I, I just had, uh, one question only because it made me think of a couple of things when you brought up some of these pension-related things. We paid down our, our CalPERS side fund out of the reserve we're using for the Bonner Bridge. Now, if we start to draw down on that fund because we're using, you know, getting ready for construction on the Bonner Bridge, at what point do you think we'll need to find an additional source if the debt's not paid down by the time you're ready to use that cash?
For the bridge?
Yeah. No, not for the bridge. I mean, the fund was used for the bridge, which means if we use that money for the bridge, we're going to have to backfill the loan we made to ourself.
No, we let, I'm not sure I understand your question. We, we, we left enough money in the bridge fund separate and apart from the loan-
Okay.
-to deal with the bridge. The, 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 uh, financial challenge we made for ourselves by doing the bridge loan to pay down the, the debt is we hindered our cash flow a little bit. So, I've, I've made Kathy's life and Mary Grace's life a little harder because they have to be a little more thoughtful about when dollars go out to pay bills. Had we been able to sit on that extra monies, the extra three million that we used for the side fund, we would have the luxury of being a little more, uh, comfortable when we're paying our debt, uh, paying our bills on the bridge work. But, but we made sure we left enough money in the bridge fund for our responsibilities under the bridge. And we have been making payments back to the bridge fund. Uh, we have that structurally built in a payroll. So, we are making those payments back. You know, and really, as, as soon as we get the bridge done, then we have the ability to talk about what to do with the monies that are still in, in that fund. And there should still be money in that fund.
Mm-hmm. That's good. Uh, yeah, I just wasn't sure where the, whether there would be any, uh, crossover between the, the two cash pots that we had created out of that fund, because at the time, it was kind of uncertain what the Bonner Bridge would end up costing.
Right. We, we made sure that the amount in the bridge fund could take us, for our match responsibility on our federal grants, into the thirty millions for the Bonner Bridge. And we don't expect that project to reach that level. So, we know we have enough capacity-
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to, what, what, what do we expect?
Uh, I, I don't know what we currently have in the bridge fund, actually in the bridge fund, but I know we were holding back three point something million because that represented, you know, we need to come up eleven and a half percent on the bridge. And so, we wanted to make sure we had more than what we thought eleven and a half percent actually was before we recommended making the loan on the PERS issue.
Right.
Yeah. So, so I don't know what, I don't know what our actual dollars are, but Ms. Arm can call that up, uh, for you shortly.
And I guess you've got the, uh, five-year phase in for the new actuarials on CalPERS requirements, all figured out?
We have the numbers. Figuring out how to pay for it, that's a different story. You know, one of the interesting challenges, though, that we're dealing with right now is actually in, uh, Central and Police Authority, um, where we actually had a retirement recently. He, and the person who retired was the last member of one of our contracts. So, we're de, we're going to have to deal with an interesting problem. They just issued these five-year actuarial analyses, and now we don't have a payroll in one of our contracts to actually bill it again. So, we're talking to CalPERS now about what does that actually mean? Because their system's not really set up to deal with that particular issue. You know, for the benefit, maybe I just, I'm being clear on what PERS has done. They've essentially said, we're, we're going to catch up. We're going to, we're going to do what we should have been doing all along, and we're going to finally get these, uh, investment pools to where they ought to be. So, congratulations, all member agencies. You owe us money over the next fifteen years so that we- next 15 years so that we can catch up. And so every agency's been told, this is how much for each contract that you owe as a payment over the next 15 years annually, to catch up on your unfunded liability in your various pools. And so, yes, we do know what those numbers are. And for the city of Larkspur, it's probably another half million a year.
Yeah, and that's, they didn't want to make it a lump sum. So that's my reference to a five-year phase-in. They were going to increase the amount every year until we got to whatever the annual, final annual amount would be.
Right. And then it's another 10 years of carrying it out to make the, to get to the payoff point.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I think we're done for tonight, so take a-
Did you have that number? Kathy did have that number, yes.
So the bridge fund right now has about $2 million in it. And I know that there are receivables, that Mary Grace is getting ready to bill back out to Caltrans for, I think, another $600,000. So we have, there's money left in the bridge fund still. And then there, of course, like Dan said, that what we've built in for the side fund repayment is built into the payroll. So every payroll, it goes back. So we are ahead of, continuing on.
And I just should make sure we're clear. We pay the bills on the bridge, and then we get money back from CalPERS. We actually pay out 100%.
Right.
And then we reimbursed 88.5% of those bills. So we're telling you there's 2 million now, but there's outstanding monies we're owed because we've paid bills that are due. And that's what Kathy's- On every bill we pay, we get 88.5% back from Caltrans, who is our state administrator for the federal grant that we got. If that doesn't sound convoluted enough, and there's a lot of admin charges lost in all that transfer.
What's the time lag in getting those reimbursements back?
Once Mary Grace puts together an invoice and gets it to Caltrans, it can be anywhere from a month to three months. Sometimes, you know, they're not, turnaround time is not great, but it's, at least it's better than some of the state's reimbursements. So...
Yeah, we still haven't gotten everything back from the triple flip yet, right? That was in '04.
Well, we are, it's coming to a close.
Oh, that's good to hear.
So it's coming to a close at the end of this year. So that, that's part of the revenue. I split that part out of the revenues because the triple flip is going away. And that's a revenue stream that we're not sure how it's going to translate once we get it back. So it'll be interesting to go forward to see where we are. Yes, yeah. They have been paying us back, but it's taken a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, from '04, you're right.
Okay, well, great. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We will see you on Saturday.
8:30.
8:30.
Not yet.